Please.
Councilmember Holland?
Juan? Rick DeGualia not here.
One second.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here, I'm here.
Oh, good. It's good.
I would like to answer our city.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, are you here?
I'm here.
And guess what? I'm here as well.
Perfect.
Let's move on. Okay, are there any public comments? Public comments have to be with relation to what we have on the agenda today, which is our Climate Action Plan update.
What, now or in the now?
You can do them twice. After we bring the item up, you can also say something. Yeah, yeah, because we want to record you.
We were supposed to introduce Jeanette and Tim, but there she gets.
Okay. Doesn't say that on the agenda.
So Carol Flaherty.
It doesn't say after public comments. It says after.
And those of you on the council, I presume, have seen and hopefully read my letter, so I'm not going to regurgitate it. I think the points were pretty emphatic in there. But I would go back a couple of months when we were talking in the council about the gas ban and what should there be a gas ban? Should we have, you know, reach codes that went to all electric? And there was a lot of discussion. The clear resident input was we want our stoves, we want our fireplaces, we want our barbecues, we want our fire pits. That's not what I see in this plan, and I realize that it goes out X number of years. We also don't have an infrastructure, I don't think, in California that is going to accommodate within the time period that we have in this plan. But to say that we have to replace our gas appliances with electric ones, I don't think is enforceable, and I don't think people are going to do it, and I'm not replacing poor gas fireplaces with electric ones, I can tell you that right now. And bust through all the marble and the walls because I don't have electric behind them for igniters. There's a lot more involved. So I think that the goals are too far a reach for what we thought in Atherton was the agreement a few months ago with all the discussion. I think the time period is too short for the infrastructure to be in place. And third, there is no way in hell that we are ever going to agree to have to have an all-electric house before we can sell it. That was the one that made me write the letter. I understand that these are suggestions right now, but I think we've got to come back down to reality as well. What the Atherton residents want, what the Atherton, and we do want to help the climate. There's no doubt about that. It's to what level do we want to change our homes that we have? To what level are we willing to pay a lot of money? To what level are we going to be able to work with PG&E? What time period? And when you become so restrictive that you can't even sell your house until it's electric, that's just too much. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments here in the room?
I do, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
And for those of you who don't know me, my name is Amy Farrell. I'm a resident and chair of the Environmental Programs Committee. I'm also a mother of four boys, one at Menlo School, one at Menlo Atherton, and two who have already graduated college and work in New York City. When I think about this plan, when I think about the steps that we can take, I think about my children, and I don't just think about what a home can be sold for. I also think about air quality. I think about air quality for younger children than mine, my grandchildren, who are exposed to toxic fumes that come from natural gas. So that's one of the things that's top of mind for me as a mother. More than that, when I think about this plan and I think about the steps that we are taking, it is long-term, as Carol mentioned, but we're taking steps just as we would when we're looking, and I'm looking at my sons who are going to be driving a vehicle. Not only will they have to go and get a license, but they have to abide by some rules of the road. Otherwise, we'll have accidents. It's the same thing with emissions for our vehicles. We have smog emissions because we want to protect the air quality for all of our residents. So this Climate Action Plan makes me think about how we're taking care of our children and the future. So I just want to put that point out there, that it's not just about homes and selling homes or refurbishing barbecues. It's actually about the future of our children and their health.
There you go. Any other public comments in the room? How about online? No public comments? Okay, at this point in time, we'll close public comments, and now we have staff introduction, new staff introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you got two directors over there that are going to introduce their two new respective staff.
Hello, Mayor, council, members of the public. Robert Barone, I'm the Finance Director here for the town of Atherton. I'm pleased to announce that we have a new junior accountant with us. Like to introduce Jeanette Tapiero. Jeanette joined the town of Atherton back September 5th, so wanted to take this time to introduce her. Jeanette has experience in commercial banking, in finance, and as a junior commercial loan officer, but also has several years' experience in municipality, experience with the one with the city of Melpedes as an office assistant within their land development department, worked there three years, and also with the city of Mountain View as an office assistant in their community development department. So Jeanette has experience in municipality and finance, and we're glad to have her join us. I think you probably have seen her as you come around the offices, but want to welcome Jeanette with us in our county department as our junior accountant. All right.
I'm just going to add, I had an opportunity to talk to her earlier, and I understand she's a graduate of San Jose. That I, uh huh, so she has a degree in finance?
Yes, San Jose State, that was, I was missing something. She graduated from the university, San Jose State University Business Administration and Finance degree.
Well, we already, we already applauded once, that's it.
My apologies on that. That was, I was going to mention that.
And I have to say, I told her that you are a really wonderful boss and that you have a lot to teach her.
Yes, all of us, yeah, me, department, just in general, the town of Atherton, you know, just with our council, with every, with our many committees. But yeah, she's a lot to learn, and she's eager, and we're glad to have her.
Good. All right, Robert, the other Robert.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Robert Ovadia, the Public Works Director. I am really pleased to introduce you to Tim Al. He's our new Associate Engineer, filling a vacancy that we had for way too long, I think, almost, what, a year and a half, almost? And so really happy to have him on board. He just started pretty much around the same time as Jeanette did. And so he is starting off by taking on our, sorry, let me go into the background. Tim also graduated from San Jose State. He is a licensed civil engineer and structural engineer. We're happy to have him join us. He comes from the private sector and so had been predominantly working, doing structural engineering work, and then transitioned to working for a construction company, so he's familiar with building construction and site development work. And so we have him starting off initially with dealing with encroachment permits, starting to take that on. And then when he, he's actually going out on vacation for a couple of weeks, and when he comes back, he'll be helping us with the sidewalk repair program, our traffic calming program, and slowly taking on grading and drainage. He's also been a great help in helping us put together our annual stormwater report that we just turned in this week, and he'll be helping with version control measure inspections at the different construction sites as well. So with that, Tim.
And with your permission, they don't have to stay for the whole meeting, right?
No, they don't. All right, get back to work.
Through the mayor, can I just say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Ovadia, it sounds like you're just going to throw them to the wolves a little bit, you know, you're going to just put them out on the street, so you'll get an opportunity to meet a lot of our residents and see the community up close and personal, I think, with all the encroachment permits and the sidewalk repairs.
Yeah, what are you going to be doing?
Yeah.
I am not throwing him to the wolves. So, like I said, we're easing him into a few things, but you are correct, he's going to get very familiar with our construction community, both through the encroachment permit process, the stormwater inspections, monthly inspections that we have to do during the rainy season, and then through the grading and drainage stuff. And again, taking on the sidewalk program and traffic calming is something that he'll have a lot of interactions with residents as well. But, you know, we have a great community, and I know that, you know, I've enjoyed working with our residents, and I know Tim so far has as well.
All right, good.
And to answer the other question, Robert's going to be getting to everything he's been unable to get to over the last year.
Okay, all right, okay. All right. So the purpose of this meeting is to discuss and adopt a resolution to approve or amend and approve the 2023 Climate Action Plan update and CEQA notice of exemption. So I assume that that will be... Is that you, Rachel?
That's me. Good afternoon, Mayor Widmer, council members, members of the public. My name's Rachel Londer. I'm the Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office, leading our sustainability programs and our, I'm the staff for our Environmental Programs Committee. It's great to be here to talk about the Climate Action Plan. I know we had a chance to talk about this in June, and the council wanted to come back for more of a deep dive. So my goal today... My goal today is to build on that June 21st presentation and complete that review of our proposed update to the town's Climate Action Plan, which you may hear me refer to as the CAP or the plan. And I'll be making the recommendation that council adopt a resolution to approve the 2023 CAP update and authorize the middle of a CEQA notice of exemption, and that we don't have to go through the CEQA process for this, as it is not tied to our general plan and it's environmentally positive. We have about 25 slides, so I encourage questions and comments throughout the presentation. We also have our partners at Peninsula Clean Energy on Zoom, so we can utilize their time to answer any questions we may have relative to energy, which is what we'll start with. But just to provide a little bit of context, I know we went over this in June, but we've come a long way since then. In 2016, the town adopted its first CAP, a roadmap with 21 strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions responsible for climate change. It included actions that the town would take and actions that we would encourage our residents to take. And now in our 2023 update, we've set two goals. The first one was included in our original 2016 plan, though we didn't have a clear roadmap for how we'd get to 49% reduction of 2005 levels. That was our baseline year, the first year that we collected our inventory by 2030, so in eight years, a 49% reduction, which aligns with the state goal in SB 32, which was passed in 2016. And then the second goal, this is a new goal in this 2023 CAP, is to achieve 100% reduction of 2005 levels by 2045 or 22 years, aligning with Executive Order B 5518 and Assembly Bill 1279, the California Climate Crisis Act of 2022. I wanted to just pause and be really clear on what carbon neutrality is, as the second goal is, is the goal, the 100% reduction. And so really, what, when we say 100% reduction or carbon neutrality, what we're simply looking to do is reduce emissions as close to zero as possible, and then identify ways to capture or offset any remaining emissions. And so that's what the state has set forth in that bill. We're aligned with what the county has done with their Climate Action Plan, several jurisdictions, and even large companies in our area. So it's an industry standard term, carbon neutrality, and the 100% reduction is getting as low as possible and then offsetting through either carbon sequestration strategies or other technologies. So I just wanted to share that it's ambitious, but it's an ambition of many jurisdictions in the area and businesses, and we're aligning with the state by setting that target. And so if we're going to reduce our emissions as much as possible, it's important that our plan's based in the reality of where our emissions are coming from. And so our last emission inventory was done in 2019, and we can see that our cap is going to be focused on strategies that reduce emissions from the town's largest contributors. That's residential energy usage, we're burning natural gas in our buildings, burning petroleum in our transportation, and sending garbage to our landfill. Our total emissions are over 55,000 metric tons of carbon CO2 equivalent. This is the equivalent of burning 6,225,385 gallons of gasoline, just to understand what those emissions look like. Yeah.
How do you calculate that?
It's an EPA calculation. Yeah. So they, yeah.
So it's like an average across the county?
So the EPA is a national assumption. So I'm just trying to like make that number of our emissions are 55,000 metric tons of carbon equivalent look like something. It looks like burning over 6 million gallons of gasoline.
Okay.
But these numbers are specific to Atherton. They're not.
These are specific.
And how were they calculated?
So these numbers were calculated, and I can, we can pull up the whole emission inventory if you'd like to.
Just give me your analysis on it.
Oh, sure. Yeah, so the residential energies comes from our PG&E data, so PG&E provides this data for residential and commercial accounts, so we know where energy is being used there. For our waste, we get the amount of tons of materials from green waste, and that's calculated there. And then for the transportation, we do get that number from a county vehicle miles traveled throughout the county.
And what is that, an allocation to our town based on population?
Correct.
So it doesn't take into account that we have more Teslas than anybody else in the United States or the world?
Which actually gives us a little bit of flexibility in the plan, because we, we may be able to do a little bit less with transportation than what we've modeled. But we can look at that, definitely.
No problem. Thank you.
Yeah. And I wanted to share that our, our cap, since we last talked in June, has now been put online through this new tool, and it hasn't been published yet, because I want to make sure the council would get kind of a first look and a first introduction to what we're doing here. But this is going to be... Oh, it's not working. Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's going to be on the, on the, on the city website?
It will be.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's going to be a tool where community members can interact with the plan, see what the town is doing and what they can do, and learn more about climate change in Atherton.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so this is, I wanted to direct this to the Climate Action Plan dashboard piece of it, because I'd like to kind of show at a high level what the plan looks like. I think this is the best visualization that we have here. And so you'll notice in the plan, we have focus areas, building, energy, transportation, solid waste, and carbon sequestration and water use. And then under each one, we have objectives, which provide measurable steps for achieving the goals. So like for transportation, here are two objectives. And then under each objective, we have strategies. And so in the last council meeting, we just looked at the objectives, and today we're going to look at the objectives and the strategies. We have 61 strategies, so we won't be able to look at all of them in our short amount of time together, but I've pulled out a few key ones that we can have discussion around. So this is a comprehensive suite of actions that would get us close to carbon neutrality. If these strategies don't work, like we don't like T 1.3, we, we try it and it doesn't work, we don't have to do it, there's nothing legally binding about these sets of actions, it's just the universe of possibilities, of things we can do to get to carbon neutrality. Additionally, any of these strategies that require separate public processes, like a change to our building code, would have to go through a completely separate process, where we're doing study sessions, community outreach and engagement, and adoption at the council level. So just wanted to clarify that.
So are these strategies what was listed in the, you know, like E 1.1, that's what you're talking about when you say strategies?
Yes. Yeah, so you could think of each strategy like as a project.
Objectives and goals.
Yeah.
Strategies.
Yeah. Objectives, goals, strategies. Yeah. So this is really a visioning document. It's to help us align with the state and our neighbors and to reflect the rate of action that's needed for climate change. So you can go back to the presentation. Yeah, so if the plan's adopted, we'll publish that.
With any comments?
Yeah. Yeah. And if not, we can revisit the content that's on the dashboard to make it relevant. Okay, we'll start with energy. Our carbon neutral future requires us to look closely at how we use energy in homes, schools, community institutions, and town facilities with 100% carbon-free electricity from Peninsula Clean Energy, or PCE. Our energy section focuses on transitioning to as many electric systems and appliances as possible to take advantage of that carbon-free electricity we're getting. None of these measures are mandates, rather different levers we can pull. So within energy, we have policies we can look at, education strategies, programs, partnerships, collaborations, and those sorts of things. So I'll start with Objective 1 of electrifying new construction. Two of the key strategies under electrifying new construction include providing incentives and compliance pathways for new construction to be electric. So looking at electric preferred or electric required reach codes, increasing permitting fees for natural gas infrastructure and equipment, increasing requirements through CEQA and compliance based on emissions per projects. So those are different policy levers we could pull at the building counter. The second key strategy we have is encouraging building all-electric, conducting an educational campaign to promote the benefits and versatility of electrification, using case studies, guides, and resources from county-wide programs. And you'll see below some icons of available programs that are currently available with financial incentives and technical and engineering support to electrify all building types that we have within the town. And so I wanted to pause after this one to see if there's any questions, things we're excited about, concerns with these strategies.
Elizabeth, go ahead.
So, Rachel, just... I just wanted to kind of highlight that what we're seeing on, in our packet, it's Objective 1, electrify new construction, and then all the bullet points you have. There's one that's E 2.2. There's, it's a new update to our plan, and the strategy is to create policies to advance the adoption of electric appliances and systems in existing buildings. Now, that's not a mandate. It's, it's, if we create these policies, we would then try to offer that solution to some people who may want to make an all-electric house, but it's not a mandate that all new construction has to be all-electric.
Correct. Yeah, and as Carol mentioned, we're responsive to the Berkeley decision where the Ninth Circuit has made a decision on the legality of whether or not local governments can ban, yeah, or have only one fuel choice available. And so at this point, we're not looking at that as a requirement. That decision is being appealed, and we'll have a response in December, so we'll know at that point. But we've paused enforcement on any requirements to new buildings, but there are opportunities to look at, you might be familiar with the Energy Design Rating calculation that comes out of CEBEC RES, the energy modeling software, and see how we can require a higher goal there, so moving from requiring zero to, to nine, which would make it so electrification projects are easier to pass.
If a developer or a homeowner wants to do all-electric, there would be some incentives that we could offer within a policy that we create, but it's not a mandate that they have to, because there are lots of different people who want, want lots of different things. And there are some that don't want all-electric, and if that's the case, then I guess they still can build with gas.
Yeah, and it's my understanding, even with that Energy Design Rating calculation, that doesn't take into consideration pool pumps, cooking, fireplaces, so those would still be allowed to be, gas, even in an all-electric. Even if someone chose the all-electric pathway, they could still have carve-outs for those, okay?
Yeah, so I, I would say, on this, you know, with exceptions, okay? Because what you have written here is 100%, blah, 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 100%, maintain 100%, blah, 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 okay? And that's not, that's not what we approved. So if you put down, you know, there should be some words that say things like, you know, explore, as opposed to just do it, you know, because things are going to change over the years. But I think also where we've already carved out exceptions, who say, you know, with, with exceptions, you know, maybe put an asterisk by it, because we've already made exceptions here. Because a layperson just reading this says, wait a second, that's not what we approved. And, and, you know, as, as, you know, Elizabeth pointed out, you know, people have different views, and, you know, we can try and incentivize them to do something, but we can't force them at this point in time. So I think explore gives a better, on, on many of these things that you've come up, gives a better say, okay, we're going to continue to look at those things, and we're going to try and find ways to, to make everything, you know, meet the goal, which a goal is something you strive for, it's not a mandate. Those are, in many of your comments in here, those are things that have stuck out to me that said, we're saying we're not, I don't agree with that, but if you say explore, then I can say, well, I can support that. If you, you know, if you, with exceptions, where we've already made exceptions. Over time, we may change those exceptions, but if you're exploring things, it's not a mandate. And, you know, just as Carol pointed out too. So I think throughout this document, those are some of my key comments that I think would make sense and would allow the whole council to agree, else we may have a split decision, which is not going to be a very good situation.
Through the mayor. Just, I just want to make a comment, yeah, that you, you said throughout the, the document that there's a lot of, you know, have to, must, things like that. I only found two areas where it kind of looked like there were, like creating a policy to advance the adoption of electric, which was E 2.2, and then E 2.6. In the strategy, it was improve process, but then in the description, it says to require all major efforts. But everything else was, you know, quite, quite open-ended, and just as you were recommending those kind of wiggle words.
We need to have some wiggle words that allow for it. And I'm, I'm more than happy to call out the ones that I've taken exception to, but I don't think that that would be worthwhile too, because I think I've made my point. And so I just think that, you know, that's what we should, you know, look at doing, and because I don't, I, you know, all this stuff about making 100%, right? Well, there's greenhouse gases and... Well, there's greenhouse gases involved, the making houses. There's a lot of greenhouse gases involved in making lithium batteries, actually more than probably what they save. So there are, you know, we should just, you know, I think as the council, we want to move in the right direction. We want to move together, but not have all this finite stuff in it. If, if, if you, if it makes sense to you, Rachel, that's all. Diana, you had his comment?
I was just going to point out the items you called out, E two point two starts with explore.
No, but not, not on, on B E dash E one or E three. You know, there's, there's items in there. There's the item with later on in the document, uh, E one again on page seventeen, it says, you know.
Excuse me. I thought we were just talking about the energy and the new construction.
Well, there's, there's two energy sections here. She's going over the cert, the, the summary of the energy session, but there's a whole energy section that starts on page seventeen.
Yeah.
So I was just trying to cover all of it. That's all. That's my, that's my comment. Okay? And that'd be my comment throughout, so I don't need to repeat.
Page seventeen, did you say? But energy?
Seventeen of my.
Of the online packet, which is different page numbers probably.
Is it the carbon sequestration and water use?
No, I'm on the whole pack. If the, the stuff.
The printed packet doesn't have the same page numbers as the digital.
Okay.
Well, I guess the point I was going to make is that I think that there's nothing in here that's a mandate. I think that the word explore is throughout it.
There's in a lot of places. I agree.
And, and then the points when it's talking about like E one, two and three, those are goals. Those are goals. So um, anyway, I, I think it, it reaches what you say. We're just, all of this to me is this is what we'd like to have happen. These are strategies we can explore and nothing's being mandated here. So uh, it's all about educating.
All about educating.
And that, that to me, I don't think anybody can argue with as being a goal that we should have as a city is to educate.
Right. Well, I disagree with that comment. I think wherever you say maintain a hundred percent new construction being all-electric, I think that that's, is a mandate. That's not an explorer, but go ahead.
Exactly. Twenty four.
That's a twenty forty-five.
That's a twenty four, forty-five goal is to continue. Yeah.
George. Perhaps at the beginning of the document that you guys are reviewing, you could have some sort of introductory sentence that says, you know, within the context of the town's adopted policies, programs, exceptions and budget constraints, this climate action plan does. And that covers your exceptions issues that you've already adopted with respect to fireplaces and pools and all that other stuff. Uh, and it addresses budgetary constraints that the town may have with respect to adopting any programs or providing any incentive.
Okay.
I like George's idea. I think these goals should be our goals. I mean, it's, a lot can happen between now and twenty forty-five. I mean, just in the last year, the amount of technologies that have come on board for electrifying houses has changed tremendously. There's so much innovation happening here. So I think setting these goals with language to add that these strategies are ideas and things for us to be looking at continuously. So that we're evolving our policies as technology and education and all of that evolves, I think is appropriate. Cause I mean, if we're not fully electric by twenty forty-five, like we're, I can't, like, I can't, it's like inconceivable for me.
Not every household will be electrified.
No, I, I, yeah.
For new construction by twenty twenty, twenty forty-five?
Yeah. It says, also maintain and, and upgrade the existing ones. I mean.
Right. I think there's difference. There's a difference.
Look, I, I just, I, I agree with you, a goal. And I agree with you, goals should be something you reach for. I just think that there are some harsher words in here that need to be softened. That's all. And it doesn't, it doesn't mean that, oh, we're not going to address them. We're not going to continue to look at them. It just says, we'll explore it and if we think it's a good idea, or if the council at that time thinks it's a good idea with the public support, then they'll do it. But.
Bill, I think we're all saying the same.
Well, I hope so.
I, I really do.
Well, I hope so.
You're just kind of, you know.
Well, I'm trying to tell you how I feel.
You know.
Uh, I'm trying to tell you how I feel and what, what's bothered me about this report.
But some of the big numbers are from the state too. So what? These are, these are from the state.
I don't care.
Atherton has, I'm just going to say, throughout my whole tenure here, um, Atherton has always lagged behind in, we've never been a leader in uh, climate um, action, anything. And our twenty sixteen climate action plan was like the bare minimum of um, what the laws were to, to stay in sync with the laws and everything. So I think that uh, some of this is coming forward from the twenty sixteen climate action plan, right? And you know, then we've got some new stuff um, about transportation and solid waste and things that um, we didn't have in there before. But um, I, I can understand the builders in our community, you know, not wanting to be mandated about what they can or cannot do in their construction or telling homeowners that they have to rip out their Wolf ranges, you know, and put in an induction uh, thing. Or, you know, with all of the potential uh, outages, you know, power outages, you know, then how do we operate? Um, however, I think as Stacy is said that by twenty forty-five, that is another twenty-eight years from now, something like that, twenty, yeah. Um, that, that technology and people's belief in what is harmful and what is beneficial will change, may change, it won't. I mean, I don't think that we all, none of us have a crystal ball. But what has come down from the state, we have to kind of comply with or attempt to comply with. You know, and I think AB thirty-two is one of the, the things that, you know, we kind of framed our uh, climate action plan for. So I think Rachel's done a really, really good job bringing some new ideas to our plan. Um, with all the little wiggle words about, you know, coordinate with regional partners or, you know, manage Atherton's employees commute emissions by doing this or encourage. You know, I think that there was only two that I saw that were really kind of, you know, kind of forceful on residents.
Well, there's one that says require E, E two point six.
I brought that one. I, I brought that one up. That was one of them.
One where we're going to decommission natural gas lines.
I've got that circled, but you know, after you read about it, but the description is.
I'm trying to argue. I'm just saying some of the words need to be softened.
Okay.
The, the city attorney also has a point.
Do that, then, you know, I, I support this thing. I mean, most of the time I do support this, but I don't want to vote against it if, if in fact there's just a few words we could change.
Right. I think our city attorney wants to uh, speak.
I, I just have a quick point I wanted to make. When we're looking at this document, we need to keep in mind kind of where it lives in the hierarchy of our other documents. And this, this climate action plan is really a, a long-term policy document. We're not imposing any specific regulations with this document itself. This really, that's the policy focus for the city for a fairly long time, right? And getting into the prescriptive, the mandatory stuff, that'll come through specific regulations that flow out of this document. So I don't know that we need to fixate too much on the specific words here, like the may versus the must in this policy document. This is really setting the direction for those regulations that we'll, we'll implement based on these policy goals. But I do agree with what George suggested earlier, that an introduction that makes it clear that this is a policy document rather than something more mandatory and immediate, it, it's a great idea.
And then also on the screen, I think Rachel, is that an option?
That's a draft stab at what you were recommending um, that I wrote last night. So it's, it's something that we can iterate on today or we can use this in the plan as part of our introduction. Um, that shares that this is a visioning policy document um, and, and not a mandate. So folks are clear and we can have this on our dashboard as well.
I have some more, um.
Go ahead.
I have some more things about the strategies.
Absolutely. I'd love to, I'd love to discuss the strategies and especially while we have PCE on the call too.
Okay. So um, objective three is promoting the use of clean energy. Um, and I think one of our, the um, issues with home electrification and is the resiliency of our electrical grid. And so I think as part of our strategies, we should be looking for ways to increase the resiliency of our grid. And part of that will be working with PG&E, part of that will be working with PCE. But I think we should be looking at like microgrid incentive programs, undergrounding power cables, working with PG&E and PCE to do what we can to make our grid as reliable as possible as we're asking our community to be fully electric. They should be parallel paths. So I would like to see some strategies added somewhere in this energy section around reliability and resiliency.
Can I add to that? Cause when, when I went over this, what occurred to me is that there should be another section, maybe an addendum that we do in the future that specifically calls out resilience and climate resilience. And I agree, micro grids was another one that, that was in my comments on this too. But I think that there should be a whole other addition to this thing, which is a category called resilience. And we identify everything from um, little things like ADAB being involved in educating people and uh, how we're responding to the changes in the climate, everything from flooding to, to air. And there's a whole series of those. And I'd love to see that section added and maybe, you know, come back in the future with something like that to be added. And it would ta, talk a little bit about micro grids and that one in particular, I was calling out too.
Yeah. And there's also, I mean, if we were all to snap our fingers and be fully electric today, could our existing transformers, et cetera, handle it? And so I just want to make sure that as we're creating these policies, we're also working with our partners to make sure that they are in lockstep with us in doing their part to get our grid ready for our increased load.
So my comment on that, I think it's really, really important. I'm glad you brought that up about the electrical lines and the power lines. And I know we've talked about it, you know, circumspectively, but, and there's uh, several residents that are very, very active about wanting to start in one section and do it. And it's very, very expensive. Um, but I'm not new to this. I mean, when I first moved to um, Atherton, I think it was uh, two thousand uh, five, two thousand six. One of the council members on my uh, block asked me to come speak about undergrounding that strip of Emily, uh, just from Alejandra to uh, Valparaiso, um, because there was some extra money in the, in the bank. And so that's not a new idea. And I think we need to maybe hold another study session from, you know, with council to, to gauge how much uh, support we would have to do it and figure out how we could get it done. Maybe have PG&E talk to us about how much it would cost if we do bond issues or something or section by section. You know, because Lindenwood has underground lines, right? So we don't, they, they don't want to pay. And maybe Lloyd and Park? No, I'm not.
No, Lloyd and Park, I think has, well, they have, you know, they, they have underground, they're underground, they're in the conduit.
Okay. So anyway.
But Lindenwood has it.
Yeah.
For the most part, except for when you get to the, the far southern part.
Okay. So what, what I'm saying is if we passed a, you know, a tax, you know, to, to pay for it, not every resident would, would want or have to.
But they would benefit it because if a tree goes down somewhere in Atherton, they might be on the same part of the grid.
That's true too.
Point like, you know, thinking about the storms that happened in January, the, I mean, we had like one day where like forty trees hit power lines or something like that, like in Atherton alone. So, you know, doing our part to get our house in order as we're asking residents to electrify, I think should be something that we're looking at.
A very good point.
One of the things George was pointing out is that we have a uh, a diesel generator. So we do have a generator that, that powers most of the city. But the new gen, and we even did a report with uh, on how to do this going forward. But we're about to get all the solar panels and the newest technology uh, on micro grids, a lot of them are hybrid. Meaning they'll have the diesel generator, but they'll combine it with solar panels. And, and so that should, looking at that again, and we have to revisit it every few years because the technologies are really changing rapidly. So I'd like to see that one be one that we look at. And there's grant monies to be had there as well.
With respect to that resiliency section, the goal tonight is to approve this plan as amended. But it's a living document, so we can continue to evaluate and add and address those bigger issues and come back with an amendment or an update or a section to add to it.
Okay.
Well, the back part of this document is, you know, it out hadn't been, it's just up to page thirty-one or thirty-five, something like that.
Yeah, that all needs to be updated. Right.
I read the whole thing, but you know, I didn't need to if somebody had given me a heads up.
George was texting me like, don't do it. Don't do it.
Well, it was good for, you know, historical.
It's bedtime reading.
Yeah.
Okay. So I have another question about electrifying existing buildings. Um, it seems like there's three, and I just don't know how this works. There's three kind of tracks for buildings in the town. There's our municipal town operation buildings, there's residential buildings, but then there's our pseudo-commercial buildings like the schools, some of which are private, plus circus club, plus cow water. I don't know if we have any oversight of cow water, if our codes affect.
We do over there, but not, not the public schools.
Right. So are they separate? I mean, it's just, it's a very different project electrifying Sacred Heart's campus versus my house. And so how does that functionally work in terms of codes? Do they, can you just explain that?
Yeah, sure. Our, our private schools are regulated under our building codes. So anything that we amend in our code that we have jurisdiction over would apply to their facilities. The public schools, they report up to the state architect, so they don't go through our building department. However, there are a lot of generous programs for public schools. The county um, is offering a K through twelve program where right now they're basically offering free heat pump um, for schools, heat pump, water heaters. Um, and none of the Atherton's public schools have participated. So there's a huge opportunity and that's one of the strategies is to engage the schools. However, we don't have like authority over them. We don't have the same levers we can pull at the building counter with them. So it would be a really collaborative partnership with them to introduce them to the program implementers, share with them what the incentives are, go on facility tours, walkthroughs with them, help them inventory their equipment and kind of handhold them through the process.
Cause their emissions counts towards our.
Correct.
Table. Okay.
Selby Lane School has, I don't know if you've been over there, but they have a whole carport of solar panels. I don't know where they got the money for that, but it's, it's pretty impressive. It's very big. And that's one of our public schools. So they're not lagging behind. I don't think, I was surprised to see that.
Selby Lane is not public. It's the Adelante.
Yes, that's, that's, yeah, yeah. That's a public school, is it not?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a public school. It's a public school system and they got a grant for that.
It's a magnet school for.
But they must have gotten a big grant. Cause it's, it's significant. It's not a little thing.
They got a grant. They don't have much money.
Okay. I have another question. Um, in the packet, one of the things you mentioned was leakages of gas infrastructure, which is a big problem. And I'm wondering, have we ever monitored it or has anybody? I mean, I know like Stanford's done studies monitoring and I've seen like very scary grids of like what Boston looks like. I'm just wondering if there's.
Yes.
Have we ever?
Yes. PG&E's come through here at least twice in the ten years that I've been through here.
Okay.
Um, talking to us about our infrastructure and gas infrastructure, and they do routinely conduct leakage tests.
You know where they go? I had them at my house. They go outside your house. So when the guy, I happened to be home when the guy came and I grabbed him, I said, oh, you got the machine because he's got a thing. I made him come into my stove in the house. He was fine to do it actually. So that's a good education thing to get out. If you're worried about it and you have kids in the house with asthma and you, you have an old gas, they'll, they'll come in. They'll come in and do it for you if you ask. They're not going to automatically come because they only look around your gas hookup is what they do. And they have like a little device, whatever.
That's, that's one component of what they do, but it's also a vehicle that they drive around town that.
Test or something.
Well, yeah. Okay. And they've been a lot more attentive to that since the San Bruno fire. And they did right after that cat, cat catastrophe, they sent, you know, legions of trucks, you know, around, on down, up and down every street. Um, they're, they called it a pig, some kind of a pig. They're, they called it a pig, some kind of a pig, um, wand or something, uh, looking for gas leaks.
Well, they've also been replacing the infrastructure for.
That's true.
A number of years, ever since San Bruno.
Yeah, right.
And I put in these, uh, plastic tight pikes that.
Right. Okay.
Will expand a little bit as opposed to the cast iron.
And I believe our future inventories will account for leakage in the system. And Blake, I don't know if you're, you're still here from PCE. I believe that was an effort with, um, Peninsula Clean Energy and the county to quantify, um, methane leakage in the, in our gas infrastructure. If you want to expand on that, if you know anything.
Yes. Uh, so there is a project that's up, uh, my name is Blake Hirsch, Building Electrification Programs Manager for Peninsula Clean Energy. I have dug into this D, uh, in very detail along with the RICAPS group, which is a regional climate action planning group in San Mateo County. In our current inventories, we don't tend to account for methane and gas leakage, which has a higher, much higher global warming potential than CO2, about eighty times as high. When we look into it, uh, the CPUC is, is looking into leakage. That's what you've seen from PG&E and town. Uh, so they are starting to account for that and trying to reduce that. A lot of the leakages from well upstream where the, where fracking happens, um, and where we're digging for natural gas. When we consider all those, uh, together, uh, if you were to consider methane leakage, the global warming impact of natural gas is about sixty percent higher than what we usually account for, uh, because it has that high global warming potential. Not just.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So we're still on energy and we have about an hour and ten minutes left.
This is the most.
Cause this meeting lands promptly at five o'clock.
And I can share. So the second objective, which we started talking a little bit about was electrifying our existing buildings. Um, so here you'll, you'll see two of the key strategies. The first one being providing financial incentives, technical sports, education to support the transition from gas to electric appliances. I'm looking at heat pumps, heat pump, water heaters, electric dryers and electric stoves. So that's working with our partners at Peninsula Clean Energy, PG&E, um, the county through the RICAPS program that Blake mentioned, and local installers to create an electrification support hub that provides technical and financial support to residents, organizations such as schools and the circus club and businesses, um, that are looking to replace gas appliances upon burnout. So we'd also be promoting, you know, all the financial incentives too, that the federal government has with the Inflation Reduction Act. And while we're at it, looking at solar battery storage and electric vehicle charges, chargers. So that's the educational component of electrifying our existing buildings. The second piece, which we've talked a little bit about is exploring ordinances for our existing buildings. That's one policy pathway we could choose in the future. Um, and some cities have started taking this on already. But we could look at, um, you know, requiring when you replace your HVAC system, your heater, that you replace it with a heat pump that provides both heating and cooling. Um, so we're able to get air conditioners as our days are getting hotter, um, those sorts of things. Another thing that we heard today, um, was, you know, having our buildings be electric, um, at time of sale. That's something we could look at, um, or making them just even electric ready when you're already doing a retrofit. So those are some options and we can, we can, um, pause here to see if there's any questions on what it would take to electrify our existing buildings. Any questions for Peninsula Clean Energy or myself?
Just, uh, I do have one additional comment on that, Rachel. The, uh, again, this is just explore.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, you could add other words in there if you wanted. But there's, uh, also a comment in there about increasing permitting fees for natural gas infrastructure and equipment in the home. And the, the town has to be very careful on how we manage our fee structure. We're not supposed to increase fees beyond what it costs to issue the permit. That was a comment brought up by a resident, very important comment. So, but you can do it in reverse. You can reduce fees for electric infrastructure as a way to incentivize the use of electric infrastructure rather than increasing fees on something that you probably shouldn't be.
We can do care where it sticks.
Correct.
Since we're, you know, kind of going through this and talking about each one. And we'll probably run to five o'clock before we can say, now we've gone through it all. How about public comments? About we take some public comments right now on the sections we just discussed. So Jim? Up to the, up to the microphone, please.
I have this on, cause I don't have, I didn't get a hearing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought this meeting was to start at four o'clock. So I'm kind of confused as to what, what we're doing here. And I never saw a notice. I checked, I checked my email twenty minutes ago and I did not see an update that this meeting had been changed. But I did want to make general public comments, not specifically on this issue. And I can hold them to the next council meeting or I can make them now, whichever.
You can only talk about the climate action plan. Cause that's the only thing that's on this.
I attended regular council meeting with some comments I have there. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. My name is Mike Child. I live at thirty-five Ridgeview Drive. Um, I would last like to ask you to table the approval of the twenty twenty-four cap as sections of it impose unjustified regulations and costs on the citizens of Atherton for no or little measurable benefit. I, like other Atherton residents, make choices every day, whether to drive, walk or bike, the type of car I purchase, the type of food I eat, the clothes I wear, um, whether to turn the heat on or to wear a sweater. We live in a land of freedom where we allow and trust our citizens to make these choices. I live in a hundred year old home. There are pluses and minuses of that, but we've chosen to live with that home and not build a new one. Our house uses natural gas and electricity for its infrastructure. Last year we used a bit below a thousand thermes of natural gas. That's a little bit more than an average house. That generated approximately six and a half tons of CO2. This is again, a bit more than the average. To mitigate this, I can easily buy credits. Today, these credits cost a couple of dollars per ton. So to mitigate, my cost would cost me about fifteen dollars today. There are projections, Ernst &amp; Young says these will re-increase to fifty or a hundred dollars per ton by twenty thirty-five and beyond possibly. But even then it's a couple hundred dollars for me to mitigate my climate. So I can do that by spending less than a hundred dollars a year. Or I can replace my stove, water heater, furnace, dryer, electrical infrastructure at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars or more, hundreds or thousands of times more expensive. It makes no sense to do this and it makes no sense for you to force me to do that. It's, it's my right to make these decisions and I think you should trust the citizens of Atherton to make the proper decisions. I have my acre of land mitigates about a ton and a half. I have thirty-five acres that are restricted as well to forest. That mitigates thirty-five tons. So I feel I'm doing my part. I don't think you guys, I think you can encourage behavior, but these mandates that are non-economic and are done for crazy reasons should not be done. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Can I make additional comment?
Yeah, yeah.
So George, I want to address your piece about, uh, because I was very involved with you Elizabeth on the off-haul fees. You cannot charge different fees for the same services or for the same permitting. And I'm going to tell you right now, and if you're going to charge a different fee to permit electric versus gas, I'm going to fight you. If I'm still alive and I'm going to fight you with everything, including the lawyer I had for the off-haul fees. Because you cannot do that under state law. Have a different fee structure unless you have a different cost structure under that. Second thing, I love the idea of underground wiring and I'm going to have to have it atom weight. And it's going to cost me one hundred thousand dollars to go underground down the side yard, which PG&E is requiring. So, uh, Elizabeth, I think that was the estimate a couple of years ago for properties was about a hundred thousand. So I just think that, that you all, if you, if you haven't gone through this, you're not really aware of what is involved in this transition for people, of what it's going to cost, of how long it's going to take, of the process that you have to go through. It is, it's onerous, it's long, it's costly. And so, uh, I, I love the idea of explorer. I love the idea of policy things, mandates, forget it, not going to work. But please think about how you're going to implement it and how you're going to enforce it. If you can't enforce it, then fine to study it, but sure as heck, don't mandate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Let's, um, move on.
I don't want, I, I know we're not supposed to respond to individual.
We're not.
Okay. But can I just restate what we've already stated earlier in the meeting as, uh, you know, our opening discussion? When we, before we started looking at the individual, um, goals and strategies.
Right. To Mike, cause he wasn't here.
Yeah, but I just, I want to refer, I mean, yes, um, this plan is, um, a, um, a, uh, goals oriented. It is not a mandated. There is nothing in this plan that mandates any resident to do anything that they don't want to do to their home. This plan talks about educating, uh, offering, uh, uh, resources for, uh, doing more climate, um, you know, beneficial things for your home, uh, that you can get from, uh, the county or, um, PG&E, PC&E, uh, stuff like that. It is not, and I just want to make that really, really clear because we have said that out the gate, there is nothing in this plan that mandates any resident, whether an existing resident to change out anything in their house, uh, do anything different. Any developer to modify their building plans at all. There's just the information and the, um, uh, goal that maybe some people will want to. And here, if you do, then you have these, um, uh, strategies and, uh, help where you can get that to do. And I agree, I'm not going to respond directly to the comment about the different fee structures and stuff. But I do very well remember the off-haul fees and that. I understand that. I don't think it's exactly the same thing, but I understand that.
We did say, Mike, right at the beginning, I brought up that in some places it said, you know, do this. And we said, explore.
Explore.
So we'll put the words in there, explore and investigate and those type of words would be in there. To soften it and to cover the items that you brought up, which I think we all, most of us have agreed to. No, that's been outlawed. That's been outlawed. Yeah, yeah. You've got a good point. Let's move on.
Yeah. And through the.
And through the adoption of this plan, it'll enable me and folks like Blake at Peninsula Clean Energy to work with residents to really come up with a clear building electrification strategy that makes sense. Um, and hopefully we can solve some of those issues where we think about the PG&E wait times and have kind of other co-benefits to these, these measures. And so I'm excited about the potential of being able to, to embark on, on this, this plan. So the last, um, objective in energy was promoting the use of clean energy. So maintaining townwide participation in Peninsula Clean Energy. This was in our original plan and as forming Peninsula Clean Energy. And now that we have the agency, um, we want to make sure that we kind of continue the spirit of being on the board and participating, um, in their programs and really working, um, to outreach for the agency with the agency to make sure we maintain, um, our opt-out rates at three percent or less. And they're at three percent right now. Um, so making sure we're taking advantage of the clean electricity that they're purchasing for us.
I'm just going to make one comment about PCE since, um, our council member who is the chair of the PCE board right now. And, uh, and I was, um, at C-Kag when Dave Pine Supervisor, Dave Pine brought this whole idea up to us. It has exceeded our expectations of participation across the Bay area from North County all the way down. Uh, Peninsula Clean Energy has been a home run for, uh, providing electricity, uh, in a clean way, uh, to our residents. And, you know, you don't have to do it. It's not mandated. You've got, you've got a choice. On every step of the way, you have a choice. You don't have to use Peninsula Clean Energy for your electricity to turn on your lights. You don't have to. So, uh, but it's there and, um, they say it costs less. I don't know. I just use so much electricity. It's, it's expensive. But, uh, since Rick is not here, I'm, I'm touting, tooting his horn, uh, because he's done a remarkable job representing Atherton on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board.
It's supposed to, it was originally going to be five percent and we got the three percent. So that's good.
Yeah.
All right.
Great. Any other questions on our energy section?
Okay. Just that you're going to go and, and scrub the notes and the words and work with, or, or we're just going to use that, uh, cover, cover page.
Cover, yeah.
We'll just use the cover page, although there's just a couple little, you know, mandate type.
I would, I would suggest that in addition to the cover, that specifically any one point one, two point two, any two point six, we add those explore, evaluate.
Yes. Okay. That I, okay. Good. Thank you. We can do that.
Got three more sections to go over in fifty-five minutes. Cause we have a hard stop at five.
I'm feeling real pressured, aren't you?
Yeah, you should.
I have my notes and they will be there.
And this, and this is the exact same material we reviewed in June. Um, so looking at transportation, um, our two objectives here, um, decarbonizing passenger and commercial vehicles as well as off-road equipment, such as landscaping equipment, generators, in construction equipment. And then we have objective two, promote biking, walking, rolling and taking transit through town. So the first one around decarbonizing our vehicles, um, one of our key strategies is looking at decarbonizing the town's vehicle fleet. We have a, a state requirement to look at full fleet electrification by twenty thirty. And so we need to start kind of strategizing and putting it together, a plan to look at different vehicle technologies that we can use. Um, and we have several neighbors that have already tested out the Chevy Blazer, the Teslas and Chevy Bolts. So we have a wide variety of vehicles that we can look at. And then the second one is coordinating regionally on decarbonizing delivery trucks. I wanted to bring this one out because this, this came up in our EPC meeting, um, our environmental programs committee, understanding that we're taking the emissions from not just Atherton residents, but vehicles that drive through town and what sort of levers we may have to decarbonize, uh, delivery trucks. And so there's, um, the potential to work with other cities and with the county, um, to provide some sort of regional licensing fee, um, for, for delivery trucks and that sort of thing.
But we can't require commercial vendors to decarbonize their car, their, their vehicles.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to kind of bring up, cause it's one of the more innovative, interesting.
I just, I didn't say that.
So I know, but you know, Atherton does not have any business, right? Uh, Colette is our first, uh, commercial business in town, except for development. We have, that is our business and the amount of residential development is such that the amount of trucks and delivery vans and huge equipment, I mean, this, I mean, we, we went down that road, which the off-haul fees and the, the, um, destruction of our, uh, streets. But it, you know, I just happen to be pretty sensitive because I've had like four, uh, giant home construction around me for the last three years. So, uh, you know, I don't know if we can't somehow, um, mitigate that a little bit. I don't know. You say we can't require.
I just want, does that technology even exist? Like are there electric construction trucks being developed? Yeah.
There are, um, I agree, but, uh, T one, one, T one, three and T one, four all talk about some of that permitting, business licensing connection to delivery vehicles, vehicles that operate in town. I think that would be very challenging to do and to implement.
Yeah.
Regulate.
Yeah.
Uh, to some of the points that were already made. So I think those should certainly be explored. Uh, and if it's done countywide, then it will have an impact, but it's not something I think town should just be out in front of.
Okay. Yeah. So we won't spend a lot of.
Okay. Okay.
Staff time.
Moving on.
I have a question.
True.
Sorry, Bill. When we passed our reach codes last year, it did include EV charging infrastructure for new buildings and with the gas ban being, all that part being in flux, is our EV charging infrastructure part of that building code still being enforced?
That still exists.
That still exists.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
And that's a smart thing to do, it's just a smart thing to do.
Because one of the big things we have is a large number of electric vehicles, so we need to feature that.
Getting rid of sales of gas cars in 2035, so.
Yeah.
And.
Let's see, that's how many.
Not gonna make 100% of the cars, because there are antique cars in town.
We could talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, you and I talked about that, okay, let's move on.
Wait, can I, I have one more.
Yeah.
So just to.
Sure.
Just as what it is, um, in the transportation section, just generally, I think you need to define what off-road equipment is, because that's a government jargon, and I think ATV is riding through the wilderness, but really you're meaning gardening equipment. So if you could just define that, especially on our website, because no one else knows what that means.
Gardening equipment is better word, yes.
We're coming for your ATVs too, but.
Sorry, people are traveling through the woods on your ATVs, so.
Some of the yards are that big.
I know, maybe there are a lot of ATVs.
All right, our second one, this one's, I'm really, I'm really excited about coming off of the heels of our bike rodeo this weekend that, that our chief and officers put on, where we had at least 200 folks register to come out and learn some bike safety and hang out with their neighbors. So there's a, a great appetite for biking in Atherton, and I think this is someplace where we can have a lot of influence when we educate and do these sorts of events. And we can also look at improving infrastructure, we just had a study session or a response to the grand jury on that, so it's, it's something I wanted to call out as one of our key strategies, isn't creating that infrastructure to allow for more biking and walking throughout town. And then the other one I wanted to call out was looking at ways that we can work better with partners such as commute.org to provide both our employees and community members with ways to reduce their single occupant vehicle commutes. So finding a carpool partner, getting incentives to, you know, switch to an EV and carpool, there's a whole suite of resources that are offered. So for folks who, you know, can't transition to biking and walking for all their trips, we can see if there's other solutions through commute.org for those regular sorts of.
Does it permit that Uber driver every day?
Yeah, no, no.
No, PC.
You have to take a ferry to Caltrain and then take a bicycle.
Oh, he has to take the, the train into San Francisco.
No, it's a ferry.
Then he takes the train into.
A ferry is a lovely way to start.
Might as well take them.
Redwood City or Atherton, or to Menlo Park, and you can walk up here.
Yeah. But not on actually.
Get here every day at two.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on, it's now 12 after.
And PC has like the, the first program to offer Lyft drivers, they offer them, I think, extra $2 a ride if they're driving an electric vehicle, and so they have some good stats on how many Uber drivers have switched over.
Nice. I have another question.
Yeah.
So our big sources of traffic locally are the schools, and namely, our private schools, our people are driving a long distance to get here. And I serve on the CMEC, CCG board, and I've been asking them with commute.org and all these different small shuttle services, if they've been working with private schools, do you know if any of our Atherton private schools have been looking at shuttle services or anything to incentivize our non-Atherton residents to take public transit?
Sacred, Sacred Heart has some shuttles they pick up, and same with Menlo. School, they pick up at the train station, but the majority of the people live around here. And talking to their, to their parents and to the boards of those individual schools, the, the input I'm getting back is that they feel it's too dangerous to have their children ride the bike, and so they drive them.
Yeah.
And so we do have bike paths on those streets, but, and, and we do have police officers out there enforcing on a regular basis, but they still have their, their feeling that it's, it, it could be too dangerous for them, for their children to ride the bikes to school.
And of course, yeah, public schools are still using school buses.
Yeah.
Well, they have the vans, you know, at Sacred Heart and, and Menlo. Yeah. Anyway.
How did the, just on the school bike lane front, my son will eventually go to Ensignal School, and if you look at the bike lane map of Ensignal, the Menlo Park side of it is like robust and beautiful, protected bike lanes, and then the Atherton side.
We have class two buses.
Yeah, it's like a whole different color coding system, you can see like this side is green and this side is like dotted red, borderline safety. How close are, like, I know a lot of it goes through our Bike Ped Plan and a lot of it goes through that, but do the schools, do they ever initiate Bike Ped programs based on their community feedback?
Not that I know of, parent groups normally do, but we've had them come before, but the class two bike lane that we have on our side of the road is exactly the same as the class two bike lane that's on the side of Menlo Park, I don't see.
Like the feeder beyond, like immediately in front of the school, you know what I mean? Like.
They have a crossing guard right before it gets there, you have to cross your bike there. And, and they have the crossing guard at Laurel, crossing guard right before you get into the school or all the way down to Middlefield, and there's a crossing guard, so there are three crossing guards and you need to cross it. One of them, the best one is the one right before you hit the school, where you go into the parking lot where the, where the administration building is, so.
Yeah, I'm just curious if they are part, good partners and pushing for this.
Yeah, I haven't coordinated with them, I don't know, Robert, if you've coordinated with the schools, if they've proactively reached out to you for bike infrastructure.
Push the button, I think, or no, you don't have the button.
Uh, most of the outreach that we get have been through parent groups with regards to requests for making improvements. Some schools dedicate funding for that kind of thing, they're eligible to apply for grants, we're happy to work with schools to make improvements, but we don't often get contacted directly by, by the schools.
And we do have a measure in here, T2.5, which is from the 2016 cap to collaborate with CCG and Office of Ed for safe routes to school. And within that, we could look at the options too around the shuttles for the private schools and make sure we're collaborating with them and seeing, you know, if we can help them access any funding or programs for electrifying their shuttles. And OPG&E has a generous program for installing like EV chargers for fleets, and they've been successful with some schools in San Mateo County, so we could look at that under that measure.
It'd be better if they funded the, 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 the public schools, because the public schools don't have money to do it.
Oh, they do, they do.
The private schools that we have in here are flowing with money.
Yeah.
Well, I think the public.
Will they get a higher amount?
Yeah.
They get.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
They have electric buses now, they have like the green bottoms.
Yeah.
Exciting.
We can shift to solid waste. Everyone's favorite topic.
T2.5 will also include the word explore.
That's good.
Instead of the hardware required.
Yeah.
All of waste.
Thank you.
Favorite subject.
You love garbage.
Of garbage. I love garbage.
So much.
Missed out on our tour, the three of us were having a great time with me.
Go ahead.
So with our, our waste, we'll remember it's a much smaller piece of our emission pie, but there's still a lot of kind of co-benefits we can think about with reducing waste, like reducing plastics and forever chemicals, and there's also potential with waste to sequester carbon. So we have three objectives here, implementing our Senate Bill 1383, the Short-lived Climate Pollutants Act, requirements to divert organic waste, reduce inorganic waste, and procure compost. Our objective two, eliminating single-use plastics, and three, promoting waste diversion through home composting, reducing, reusing, and recycling.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we used to just take all of our food waste, and I had a little garbage can on the top of my sink with my compostable bag in it, and I would put that in the.
The green.
The green bin with the, I guess, landscape stuff and everything, and I felt that it was doing the right thing. Now I have to put it in my black bin with my, all my other garbage, and I'm thinking, why am I separating this? Because it's all going into the same thing.
Pull it out of the birch, and if you got on the trip.
I have been very busy, I have not had a chance to do that.
Okay, but they do pull out the organic waste and they send it to an anaerobic digester, turn it into gas, and then turn it into clean, you know.
So it's really still good for me to put it in that little compostable bag, because that bag is disintegrating as it is sitting in my.
It gets straight in your garbage.
Just throw it straight in the garbage, you don't have to put it in the bag.
And they pull that.
Yeah.
Don't put it in the bag, just throw it in there, they separate it out.
There are so many counterintuitive things in the new.
So counterintuitive, I just, it makes, it doesn't make me feel good, you know?
Find time to go on the tour, we'll arrange it for you.
You think that's gonna make me feel good?
Well, so cool. I, so on that point, though, one of our strategies is to update our agreement to have curbside organics pick up for both food waste and yard waste, so.
I've already talked to Rachel about that.
Yeah, it's like, very specifically.
Yeah.
That one, I think, goes, should go away.
That one, yeah.
Yeah, and you'll see in parentheses on that one, I had my note to self there.
Potentially already completed.
Yeah.
So I'm just.
That could be a maintain.
Yeah. And ecology of.
Make sure they keep doing what they're doing. Keep on keeping on.
We also.
Another counterintuitive, sorry, another counterintuitive thing about the trash is your plastic water bottles, your other recyclable bottles, most people will take the lid off.
Oh, no, you gotta leave the lid on.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Leave that, screw your cap back on.
Yep, that's because they break the bottles all up or shred them.
Well, education on that's big.
Get clogged.
And it's unique to every community, so I think that getting education out on what the unique things about our trash, and also getting credit for the fact that we picked our trash vendor because of this.
Yeah.
So, and the other little piece that's not in here that we talked a little bit about is methane gas. Our vendor does produce, recycles and produces methane gas from it, and that's really a great thing, and that's not in here that I saw, and that's something we should feature. That's one of the other reasons why our vendor's unique.
And it also.
Well, they sell that to create energy down in, mostly in San Jose.
Yeah, their facilities.
Yeah, their anaerobic digester then produces the methane gas and does that, but your, 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 you know, your toilets, your sewage waste also goes up to Silicon Valley Clean Water, which does the same thing, it takes the, the solid waste and it, well, treats the water part, but it takes the solid waste and reduces it in an anaerobic digester and creates methane gas that powers that plant, and there's also additional energy that's sold off. But for the most part, it's just a self-sustaining group, because they use the solid waste to do that.
They are exploring.
I do too.
We were having a great. Yeah, which would be awesome, I mean, that would be great.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be good to.
Encourage that.
Responding on your comment to explore with green waste what emission reduction potentials we have with their methane capture, like if that's something we can capture in our own inventory for perhaps the next update we bring, and then we could also potentially feature that cool technology on our climate dashboard.
Yeah, I think that's important, and as much as we can encourage them to expand that program is awesome.
Yeah, so we'll definitely investigate that.
Credit for that, too.
We're far ahead of the rest of San Mateo County, far ahead.
That's good.
And so a lot of the stuff that maybe have come from the counties thing is, is not at our level.
Yeah, yeah, there's opportunity to communicate that.
They use ecology and South Bay Waste Management, and they follow what green waste is doing, and they're having a hard time keeping up.
So I'd like to see wording added to this that kind of explores that a little bit more, because I thought of the sections this was the weakest, because it doesn't, it doesn't really depict what we, the benefits that we have right now and the things we can do with what we've already picked. So I'd like to highlight that if we could as an amendment.
Can I ask, do we have in here about encouraging people to do their own composting? I know that we talked about that at the EPC. Is, is this the last one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask about that.
But I think we need, yeah, go ahead.
Do we even need to do that, given that green waste captures the gas? That's like where I'm, was so confused about whether or not we want.
People.
Right, because like, green waste captures the methane gas that's coming from our, their compost that they're creating, which would probably be better than home composting, so I'm just.
Well, here it's. Composting can be a fun project in the beginning, and then people go, I don't want to do it anymore, and it's a big mess, right?
Yeah, like from a climate perspective, I don't know if this actually is a.
Something we should.
Well, if people, if people use it for their own gardening.
Garden, yeah.
Your own garden. If you want to do it, go for it, I'm just.
But just doing it for.
From a policy perspective, this is a thing. Right.
Okay, so I agree. I'm not doing my own home composting.
I know, only.
I think it's great if you do it.
And Valerie Gardner.
We do it.
Yeah.
We do.
And Diana.
We do it.
Diana.
Diana does it. But she's, she's got.
Cut you out.
She's, she's going to do that.
I have another waste question. Some of our big garbage producers have opted out of using green waste and are using ecology still, right? Like some of the high schools.
So our, our public schools, they negotiate their own through the district.
And so are, is there waste showing up in our carbon emissions?
Uh, there, it's not.
Okay.
No, we're only looking at.
And so all the private schools are also with us on, they are locked up with us in.
Private schools are with us.
They don't get to independently.
Public schools are not, they're with ecology and they have a very favorable contract, very favorable.
I believe it's ecology San Bruno, too, it's not, it's not the.
San Carlos?
Yeah.
Weird.
Yeah, it's their commercial business.
Just curious, we should be like hyping up green waste and getting them, if we're, if they're counting towards our numbers, you know? But it doesn't sound like they are.
Who are not?
No, they're not.
So we're good.
Okay.
Good, good. There's a lot of work to do with the schools, you and I spoke about.
Yeah, absolutely, and I.
Schools throw away paper and food, and they should be at 90 some odd percent reci, you know, diversion, and they're not.
Yeah, the, the other thing I was gonna recommend is that, that the city of LA is involved, it was just on NPR the other night about this Too Good to Throw Away program, where they specifically highlighted one that's pastries, where at the end of the day, there's an app and it tells you that you can go get them, instead of throwing them away, they offer them as a discount, so it's good for the business and it, it keeps things from being thrown away. And they've done it in LA and it's been highly successful, they're just featuring it in the news just this week, so that's something we might want to look at for at least the city.
The schools.
Well, the schools, Madam Colette's.
There's no food left at the city, ever, to throw away.
There's, there are people, you know, like, you know, as mentioned several times, you know, I work at St. Anthony's, we get food from people that are putting on big parties and everybody didn't show up, or, or bakeries, that they have stuff left over for the second day, they give it to us to go ahead and serve. Things that are past their sell-by date from Safeway, they give, they give to us everything but meats, we, we buy fresh meat. But, you know, so there are places, Second Harvest does the same thing, you know, so there are places where you can repurpose food that's, you know.
I think, yeah, providing that education of where you can do that, making those specific connections.
It's gotta make people aware that that's what they, they could be doing, and it's the same thing with, you, you can give, give their, you know, clothes away, you know, broken items, they'll fix them, and then they give them away to people that need them, so they're, you know, it's, it's just people don't know about it.
Mr. Mayor, uh, two points on the solid waste one before Rachel continues. At the beginning, I'd also recommend we add that introductory within the context of the town's adopted policies, programs, exceptions, and budgetary constraints, because within this section, there are some things about assigning staff time to do particular issues. Uh, and then there are three in there that I called out that do need the word explore, that's 1.1. Uh, and then there are three in there that I called out that do need the word explore. That's one point one, two point three and three point five. Those are all require or, uh, or implement a program.
Yeah, explore base.
I wanna talk about compost a little bit and.
Yeah.
And the carbon sequestration part of this.
So let me move through the.
Let's page fifteen of the.
Of the plan?
Waste stack.
Okay, so that's.
So it says build partnerships with stakeholders who need compost. And then continue to research soil carbon sequestration through partnerships. Um, we have Cal Water in our jurisdiction. They got a lot of land that we could throw a lot of compost onto. And I'm just wondering if we've ever talked to them or like how that.
That's a great idea. I did ask them to review this plan, like, I don't wanna throw them under the bus. But they did not, they declined to comment. More just no response to email. I think it, I don't think it was a, I think it was a lack of time sort of situation for them. But I think that is an important thing to bring up with them in the conversation if they have a need for it. Um, because we certainly have a need to purchase and apply compost. So if we can even maybe get them to make the purchase, that would save the town resources as well, so.
Dawn was just here to get a free cup of coffee at Coffee With The Cops.
Yeah, should've got it.
Okay, then my other one, since I know we are trying to offload a lot of, um, get a lot of people to put composts in their yards. I just, an idea suggestion doesn't have to be in here, but we just did all these A.D.O. block parties. And we know there's all these homeowner association block, like existing parties. I'm wondering, like, half the barrier with getting people to take the compost is, like, they don't wanna drive in their car with it. So could we work with these groups to be like, hey, we'll bring it to your block and then you guys can come take it. Might make it easier for our residents.
That's a great idea.
What do you think?
And then it gets left.
Can we get them to drop?
Dump a pile of compost as somebody.
Like, yeah, just have the truck there. Just have the truck there. You take it off the truck.
Well, you gotta go to, right today, you gotta, it is, you gotta go with a bag. Yeah, you gotta bring a bag, you gotta fill it up at the park and then put it in your car and drive it somewhere.
Do it without their service will sign off.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to investigate.
This is a program we can explore and we can have, uh, the subcommittee certainly take a look at that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I mean, like, if the neighborhood groups want it, like, you know, like, we should be looking at.
Yeah, I got a good idea.
Yeah, great idea.
Okay, I have another idea.
Yep.
Um, on the plastic, reducing plastic front. Specifically with schools and with our operations, this feels like a very fun project for students to be doing, working with us to inventory our plastic waste and working with us to reduce it. We could tie it into our Earth Day Festival, give out prizes. We could have a whole science fair-esque component to plastic reduction, both for schools and for our municipal operations that I think could be really fun for kids to learn and be a part of and also maybe help us. Um, so I would love to see if there's interest on that front.
Do you think that's really needed, I guess, in the Climate Action Plan? I mean, that's more of a.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to go in here. I'm just throwing ideas at you in a public setting, so.
Yeah, I came up at the Environmental Programs Committee diving deeper into what the impact of plastics is.
Yeah, especially if the schools are a big garbage producer, like. Get the students and, like, kids care a lot about envi- environmental action. So giving them something tangible that they could start working on and helping us would be good. Get them involved with government. Okay, that's it. I'm done, I'm done on the solid waste front.
How come we didn't give away six hundred and fifty trees as opposed to just?
Yeah, we almost could've. We ran out of trees. There are people, yeah, who are on a waitlist.
Yes, thank you guys whoever did that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With our compostable foodware. So that's, those are what some of these changes are looking like, um, with our events and things. The last one on waste was, um, promoting waste diversion through home composting, reducing, reusing and recycling. Um, so that's where we're looking at expanding home composting as a way to get less tonnage going to the landfill, because that's where, um, we would see savings in our emission inventory. If we have, if you have, you know, ten pounds of food waste going weekly, we, we count emissions from that.
If they pull the food waste out, that doesn't make any sense. They pull the food waste out at the recycling.
But their trucks, where, where, the emissions from their trucks driving to your door.
Truck is there anyway. It's not gonna leave. The truck has to go to every house and pick up.
Yeah. That, I'm saying the waste is the smallest part of the emission pie. So like, we don't have to split hairs over the exact emission reduction potential. But there certainly are emission savings if you compost at home. And if it's something that works for you and you're able to apply it, it also can sequester carbon and store it for, for a long time. So that's, that's a strategy, um, in kind of the educational component of the waste section. Um, and then another idea is, um, increasing the amount of times a year we do that recycling event. Um, and potentially having a household hazardous waste component and any, um, expanding that. So folks can bring other materials that they would normally take to Tower Road.
Two of those a year.
So green waste offers one, eh, one for free. Um, so we'd have to explore with them what a second.
We have a second one. And then I think that, uh, we need to have, I think they talked about it last time. A fixing.
Mm-hmm.
Section. Okay, so.
I talked about that last time because it was shocking to see how much, like, even bicycles, e-waste that, you know, people still had the chargers and everything with it that were just going right to the landfill or their recycling process. So it'd be really cool if we could partner with Goodwill or with the Fix-It Clinics to, um, prevent things from just being deconstructed. And recycled. Oh, we did host a workshop with HNE, our, our summer intern at the library, where, um, residents brought clothes that they no longer wanted and turned it into scrunchies and quilts that were donated to Life Moves. It was a little more symbolic in nature because we donated a couple dozen scrunchies, um, from a couple t-shirts. But, um, there's those sorts of community building activities.
You can donate it to, for example, St. Anthony's, uh, St. Vincent de Paul. And then it gets repurposed as opposed to becoming a scrunchie.
Yeah.
Especially as we're entering into the winter type months and people need warm clothing. There's a lot, there is a lot, you know, when I work up there, there's over four hundred people that come for the meals and for, for food for the next day and for clothing and things like that. Four hundred a day, six days a week.
At this past year's, uh, annual waste event, Rachel proposed the idea of having, uh, food, uh, clothing, uh, a goodwill, for example, to come and take in clothes that people wanted to donate for that very reason. Recycle the clothes, reuse the clothes. We didn't have enough time to pull it off, but I think in future years, that'll be something.
We should find out who wants it, you know, uh, St. Anthony's gives the stuff away for free. Goodwill sells it.
Yeah.
Goodwill sells it, St. Vincent de Paul sells it.
Salvation Army.
Yeah.
Gives it away.
Yeah, so you wanna give it to somebody who's gonna give it away.
Okay.
To those in need. All right, well, anyway.
I appreciate that. I love the nexus of, um, sustainability and, and building the communities that support each other. Shifting to carbon sequestration and water conservation unless there's further comments on waste. Um, so again, this is a super small pie. Um, this is like less than four percent of what we're trying to do here. The first one we have is increasing our community's tree canopy. Um, so looking at tree health and tracking data um, on how well our trees are, are doing. This one also came out of the Environmental Programs Committee. And, um, then taking that data to maintain our urban tree canopy, um, and do, taking action like, uh, pruning, replacement, preservation.
And these aren't just public trees, these are private trees. But we don't have.
But provided by the public, by, by a public entity.
Uh, no, um, so we're plant, we, we provided the hundred trees. We're getting trees planted via the Caltrain Electrification Project. So those account for ours. But through every, you know, planning and land use permit that gets approved, there's a number of landscape design plans that include new trees. We'll start counting those. So I think six hundred and fifty is an achievable goal.
Yeah, I agree.
With the landscape plan.
We have to do five fifty.
Now that's a mandate. You have to do landscape screening, right? Now that's a mandate for new development.
Change the number to five fifty because we already done it.
Well, then we won't have as much progress next year to report on.
For the twenty forty-five tree goal, it says it's fifteen hundred. Is that including the six fifty from the twenty thirty goal or is that? Okay, so eight fifty between.
And those numbers are super flexible. It's, um, really how much we need to offset from the building energy and the transportation. So if we're having less residents take on electrification, then we might wanna look at more carbon sequestration strategies, which may mean more trees or it may mean looking at, um, you know, opportunities in our park um, or in our medians to apply compost and sequester carbon. Um, and we would have to do further study on the potential of that. Another opportunity is.
So that'll be an explorer.
Yeah, that's an explorer.
Yeah, explore.
Yeah. And that would just be a study. Exploring a study. So it's even like one step farther back.
Well, no, there's explorer on the, on the number three.
Yeah, on two, yeah. And then the third one, um, this is a really emerging, um, piece of the plan. And so it's, it's more of an invitation to think about this and also a bookmark. So when we, if we do update the plan again, we can build out these strategies as kind of technology and, um, resources are available. But looking at, um, how much carbon is in our building stock, um, and finding ways to use building materials that, um, sequester carbon. So there's new, um, companies that are storing carbon and limestone and then using that to build, um, construction. So that's something we could look at.
I have a comment on.
Yeah, please.
I would encourage you guys to keep an eye on green cement and the carbon sequestration possibilities around green cement, since the town maintains our roads and uses a lot of cement. So there's a possibility there. There's a lot of startups in the state of California that are doing interesting things around that. So, uh, I think it would be very cool for us to be a test kitchen for green cement if they're for carbon sequestration purposes. I don't know if they're ready, but I'm just keep an eye on it. It's more my.
Yeah, and there's some legislation that the vice mayor and I were chatting about today from, from Becker.
Becker, yeah, on green cement.
Yeah.
They wanna give it to us for free to use, we'd be happy to use it.
Yeah.
There's also rubberized asphalt and stuff like that, which sometimes works, sometimes doesn't because of the tree canopy. It, it needs a longer time to dry and the tree canopy prevents that from occurring. So it's not always.
One, one of the newer things that they're talking about is, uh, there's a law that's working on about re- restoring local decisions on, on, uh, fake grass. So there's a movement against fake grass. Um, even though some people think that that's a good alternative for drought tolerant, but apparently it's very toxic and it leads into the water base. And any communities like ours that have people with, living off wells, although I don't know how many are drinking it, but we do have wells in our community. So there's a, a movement right now to push that, which is a new topic for me. I didn't know that that was on the radar, but. So these kinds of things we need to look at. So I love that you're putting it in there for us to keep looking at because it keeps, we keep learning more every year.
Well, there's certainly a lot of astroturf around in our private schools these days.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of communities are starting to ban it already. I mean, it's, it's an active thing that's on the radar. I don't personally know a lot about it, because I always saw, saw that as a green thing to get away from.
Microplastics and it also, uh, it prevents the soil from being a carbon sequestration opportunity. It kills the biodiversity underneath it. And then also there's been some research that when kids are playing on it, they're inhaling plastic particles. So there's some health impacts there.
So there will be, there'll be some laws coming down about it and there's certainly a lot of research on it. So that's one thing for us to keep an eye on.
It's interesting. I have a question about, um, Objective Two, C two dot two, identify carbon farming opportunities. I'm very green and I do not know what that means. So what is carbon farming?
Yeah, so how we've, um, piloted with the RCD already through thirteen eighty-three is really where, um, it's a, gosh, the name of it's escaping me, but what we contribute, um, grant funds from the state that are allocated to Atherton to purchase compost that's applied on farms locally. Um, and by doing that, we're not only creating a marketplace for everything in our green bin, um, which makes it feasible for the green waste and the recologies to actually process. Um, but it also allows the farmers to sequester carbon on their land. Um, and so that's been a really successful program for us. And we're right now looking at seeing if we wanna do it again next year. Um, but there's some pictures.
Oh, in the plan.
Yeah, here's, um, here's a photo of kind of compost that we've contributed to purchasing, being applied um, in Tenidas Creek along the coast.
Okay, we're putting our compost in other communities.
Yeah, our compost, um, uh, at the green rice facility goes to Salinas.
Okay.
Agricultural.
Agriculture.
Just like, we don't have farms. What is this?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah, yeah, we're contributing.
Now we have a dirt patch. Would she be interested in a lot of compost is a real.
Okay. And then our final one on water conservation is, um, promoting our water conservation incentive, like our rain barrel rebates and our, um, long-begone programs help folks switch to more native plants, um, instead of astroturf or grass. Um, and then we also, um, at the building counter have the Model Water Efficiency Landscaping Ordinance. That's a, a pretty standard, um, requirement.
We've already adopted.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the state guidelines are based on quarter acre lots.
Yeah.
So, re- using less gallons per the state guideline is pretty darn hard.
And we'll be, I think our water agencies will be facing that. I, I got like a push notification before this meeting about new water conservation requirements that are coming down from the state. But again, that's less of an emission reduction challenge for the town and more of like a resource challenge that we'll deal with in another path.
Can I ask, do we have any rules around water infrastructure? Like, do we require pool covers for new pools or smart irrigation for, and is that something that? We could, like, if you're putting in a pool.
Say, this is more of a building question, but I'll step in. Carol can correct me if I'm wrong. But, um, when it comes to site development projects, when they cross certain thresholds for landscaping, they're required to abide by, uh, our Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. And so there are, I'd say, limitations on how much water they're supposed to be using for landscaping. With regards to pools and covers, it falls more under the safety requirements. And so there are certain safety measures around pools, one of which is a pool cover. A lot of people choose to do the pool covering for energy savings for keeping the pool water warm. Um, but that's more of an optional thing than a required thing.
What about gray water and purple pipe? Do we participate in any programs like that?
Purple pipe.
Uh, there's, I'm gonna say that from a water supply standpoint, there isn't any recycled water available. But I think that folks, if they want to put in gray water systems within their properties, they're allowed to do that.
As we explore the green infrastructure that we're required to put in and we address the El Camino water, surplus water from storms and stuff, is that something that could tie into the purple pipe or tie into gray water and research some options there? So recycling all that wa- abundant water that we're suffering from too much water right now, let's figure out how to reuse it, I guess, is what I'm asking.
It'll be a challenge, um, with regards that I think that predominantly what green infrastructure allows us to do is, uh, filter the water pollutants through infiltration into the ground. And so those are opportunities that we seek out and we require others and we implement as well. Um, when you talk about purple pipe, that usually is pressurized and comes from a treatment plant where they recycle, um, wastewater.
Yeah.
And so they feed those lines with enough pressure to provide water to folks.
Yeah, it stops at our border.
And so that is something from a water supply pers- perspective has to come from an agency that supplies water.
So is this something that's worth our while to look at as a city if Redwood City explored it and they're doing it? Is this something that would benefit us? I don't understand it, so I can't say. I'm not promoting it, I'm just asking.
Um, right now, we don't have the capacity to provide that thing, but I think there are conversations that can be had with, um, California Water Service Company. California Water Service Company as well as I think it's the Silicon Valley. Sanitation district that, that.
Blue water is the one that provides.
Yeah, so they, they have to have the infrastructure to purify the water and then somebody has to have the pipelines that bring the water in.
Have we ever revisited our rules around gray water?
It's allowed.
It's fully allowed.
Like any of it laundry and.
Black water is not allowed. So bath. Toilet sink.
So like shower water.
That wouldn't be allowed. And that's in environmental health, um, regulation.
Yeah, it's just that the Earth Day, there were a lot of gray water suppliers that were offering home systems to filter and, and reuse gray water. So I, I don't know if that, if our ordinances and stuff are up to date. I'm the newest. That's why I was asking.
That's covered by state law and it allows for it to happen. And so it's really a choice of property owners and developers as to whether or not they want to build those systems in. Um, I know that, for example, the, um, CCAG offers, um, rain barrel rebates. And so if you wanna get a re- uh, rain barrel to collect roof runoff, you know, you can do that and then use that for irrigation and other things.
So Roberts, um, can you explain how that would work when all the new construction has to have your, um, gutters, uh, and downspouts, uh, directly piped into your underground uh, drainage system that goes to your detention, uh, trenches?
It, it doesn't have to be directly connected. It just needs to get there before it leaves the property. And so.
All my, all mine are. They, that was mandated.
Oh, I said the water has to get into treatment systems and into detention systems. But you're allowed to have it run over grass or whatever else. And if you want to capture that water from, from your roof, um, I said it's, most people pipe it because they don't want the water visible on their property. But you're allowed to collect and reuse runoff and you know, we encourage for smaller properties to, um, you know, try and use what we call low impact development standards, whether it's pervious pavements, directing runoff to vegetated areas and those kinds of things are encouraged as part of our general reviews.
So the, the Charlie sections here, C two point one and C three point one are the two that I added the word explore to in terms of modifications.
Instead of identify or conduct?
And which one?
C, C two point one.
C two point one, uh, it was explore conducting a carbon sequestration study.
Oh, explore to conduct.
It's a feasibility study, so it's not.
Are we through with that section?
We are through with that.
Public comments since we're running out of time.
That's a good point.
Yeah, public comments.
On, on, on this, right?
On this, what we're talking about.
You have to go to the mic.
Five point two.
But I, I do really hope you're gonna take a hard look at the wording here. And I, I have a hard time on, on this page, five point two, where it says strategy and description. I don't know what time periods you're talking about. If you're talking about creating, you know, policies to advance the adoption of electric appliances by twenty thirty or twenty forty-five. Five, if you're talking about creating policies by next year, then I think that's an issue.
Five point two. Nobody knows what you're talking about.
Pardon me?
Five point two.
What page are you on?
I don't know what page this is because there are no page numbers, but five point two point two, there's a chart that looks like this.
What section is it?
It's in the inner. Well, it's way, way back, the first section we talked about. So as we're wrapping up, I'm just saying, when you put things into this plan and you don't have a clear idea of the date, because there's no, no dates on this chart. And it says explore the electric, electric electrification ordinances, requiring replacement of HVAC, hot water, blah, blah, blah. I mean, a, a regular person like me looks to this and says, holy cow, is this coming next year? But if you're telling me this is twenty forty-five, well, fine, you know, who cares about that? But in my experience, when we explore ordinances and we explore policies, they tend to become ordinances in this town. And so I don't trust that. It's five point two point two that unglued me, frankly.
E two point two.
Sorry, Mayor, I just wanted to, um, to add, because you made a really good comment about a lot of people don't know about something. I don't remember if we were talking about composting or but the Environmental Programs Committee is prepared to offer, we already have planned a lot of educational events for our community. Engaging with the schools as a mother of two students in a public and a private school is top priority. Um, actually, one of the moms, Christine, who's here, has a student, um, at MA, three students at MA. And also Sunet has a student at Menlo College. And I'm really excited to bring education so people understand what we're talking about and they can start to im- implement it. If it's around composting, if you teach kids the benefits of composting and they start to understand why they wanna use organic waste in their garden, um, and how they can keep it out of landfill. They can start to understand the impact of methane emissions. It's an education practice. Same with textiles and everything else. So I really encourage you, if you have ideas, um, on different topics we can bring. That's what we're here for. And we'll have them at the library. We'll celebrate them at Earth Day. But we're here to educate so that people understand what their options are and also so they understand why we're working towards these goals, whether it has to do with air quality and human health. Or if it has to do with just general, uh, reduction in emissions as it relates to climate change. So, um, so please let us know what you're interested in and we'll provide the education.
Okay, thanks. All right. Any other comments? Mike?
In terms of recycled water, um, Sharon Heights invested in a water recycling plant. So we produce today about rather the capacity produced about a hundred million gallons a year. We use about sixty. So there's a lot of capacity. We've talked to Menlo Park about using recycled water for their ponds. Um, we, there is a place where trucks can come and load it up. I don't, my guess is it's not a cost benefit for Atherton to come up that far and get it, but there is a lot of water available. We're trying to, we're trying to work with, uh, Slack and possibly Stanford because we have this great facility and we're taking the sewage from Menlo Park and, and turning it into usable water.
Good.
Nice job. Cool.
Thank you for sharing that example.
Anything else from the public? Okay, well, we did it.
And I know you're upon your tour, so we can move to the recommendation.
No, we have to pa- we have to pass a recommendation.
Yeah, if we wanna, um, move into adopting a resolution to adopt the plan as an update for our two thousand sixteen plan. As amended.
As amended. Does anybody wanna, you wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion. Will you help me word it?
Uh, you, you would like me to go through really quickly the amendment? So there was the, the, the full on intro that Rachel put up on the screen, which was a bigger, longer intro. And then within a couple of the sections, it's within the context of the town's adopted policies, programs, exceptions and budget constraints, dot, 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 climate action plan. We'll add that. Uh, and then specifically adding, uh, explore, investigate those sorts of wordage into E one point one, two point two and two point six. As well as T one point one, one point three, one point four, one point five and two point eight. And somewhere within the online version of the dashboard explaining what off-road means. Uh, also within the context of the solid waste one, adding within the context of the town's adopted policies, programs, exceptions and budget constraints. And then W one point one would be updated, which is, uh, I think based on the compost bins separation that we do with green waste. Noting, uh, the methane gas and featuring it on the climate dashboard so that we address that somewhere within this document. W two point three and three point five, adding the word explore, uh, and C two point one and three point one, adding the word explore.
The, uh, the off-road was changed to gardening equipment.
The definition of what off-road means, yeah.
Hold on, we just changed it to gardening equipment because off-road means something different than gardening.
Well, off-road is the state regulatory word, so we need to include off-road means and then gardening equipment and this sort of thing, just so people are clear.
The gardening equipment parenthetical per state off-road.
Uh, that covers small engines, is kind of what it's talking about. Um, but adopting this as amended plus the attached resolution notice of exemption for sequoia would be your.
That'll be it. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, there we go. All in favor? Okay, let's. We conclude. Thank you. We got.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.